Good morning, everyone. We are back from executive session. Can I have a first and a second? And a second to we enter open session and continue with our agenda today. Can I have, please, have a first and a second?
Sure.
Great.
Second.
Okay. So I'm going to ask Dawn Thomas, our CDA director, to come forward and discuss the exciting topic surrounding a presentation by the UDA regarding the Town Square Activation Plan. And with us, we have Barry Long from UDA who flew in to be here with us. And Dawn, can you please take the lead from this moment on?
Sure.
Thank you.
So we're here today, very exciting presentation of the Activation Plan that you all sought to get done in the late spring of the year. So the work's been ongoing throughout the summer. It's the culmination of the last two and a half years of public engagement, stakeholder engagement, interviews with the board members, and potential developers. And I think Barry has a good intro, but the ultimate goal here was, we had so much happening at the same time, it was important to make sure that everything dovetailed together and we could figure out where everything fit and why it needed to go in a certain place. So that's what we have here for you. Barry and his team have done an amazing job. And I'll let you take it from here.
Well, thank you, Dawn.
Good morning.
Good morning, Supervisor and council members. It's nice to see you again. We're excited to be back in person.
Barry, a lot of feedback.
Excited to be here in person. And as Dawn said this morning, we're going to be going through the Activation Plan. So we have it on the small screen here, which is a little glitchy. You have it in front of you, and I'll try to keep us all on the same page, meaning we're all looking at the same page at the same time. But through this process, we've been working in support of the town on the Central Riverfront Activation Study. And you asked us to bring back a draft of our recommendations before we finalized this. So that's what we're doing today. We're here to bring back a draft so that you could have an opportunity to have input. So what we're calling the proponents are, of course, the primary landowner, which is the town. The town, in fact, they own all the property that we're talking about for the Activation Plan. And then your consultant team, ourselves, Urban Design Associates, we worked on engagement and planning. And then we worked with Phil Myrick, who many or all of you have met with. He was the CEO of Project for Public Places in New York. He's now, has his own consulting practice, and he did the Activation and Placemaking piece. This is not the report. This is just a presentation. A report will be coming back that includes his piece, but his Activation recommendations have been assimilated into today's presentation. So as Dawn said, steps in the process, we're on page three here, engaging the town and stakeholders, creating the plan July and August, documenting the recommendations in draft form in September, and then we're back to meet with you today. Appreciate your taking the time. We know you're very busy. It's, I don't know where this year's going, but it's almost gotten away from us. So it's pretty exciting when we look at the... Can't wait till you get the new Town Hall, too, by the way, and the new AV. It's going to be fantastic.
That's going to activate it even more.
That's going to activate it.
Daytime activation, so we have to work on evening activation.
Yes. Evening activation. But you know, what you had when we started here were vacant warehouses or storefronts on Main Street. What we have today is the beginning of your vision for the Town Square. I remember the first time I met with Supervisor, part of your platform was the Town Square. Remember, that's in there. And today, we have a hydro-seated Town Square. It's a placeholder, but it's a tremendous step in the right direction, been accomplished in such a short period of time, and still remarkable to us. What we want looking forward is Activation. And that's what we have to keep in mind, because Activation doesn't necessarily happen naturally. We also now can see the connection between the Peconic River and Main Street. Yesterday, I was walking in the passage next to the Suffolk Theater, and I was shocked with the construction wall being down. You can see the river from back in that passage through the gateway. I was like, wow, I didn't even think that that would be possible. But that connection is so important, and one of the things we want to make sure we do is not put any visual interruptions between the water and the Suffolk. It is going to be the marquee, you know, one of the marquee experiences here, that connection. And going way, way back, that's been the inspiration.
I have to give Dawn credit for that, because when they were looking at which buildings may, the town may purchase, she had that vision. She went to the theater, and she, there was different, she had looked at different buildings, and she saw that vision of just going straight down, walking, the focal point, the center. And that is one of our anchors there on Main Street, between the Aquarium and the Hyatt and the Suffolk Theater. Those are our main anchors at the present time, so that was a point.
I have to say, I was walking down for the Country Fair at Main Street, and I know in advance what it's supposed to look like. And when I made that right at Suffolk Theater and saw it, I was aghast at how beautiful it was to see all the way down to the river and have that opening. It was really wonderful, and it's really coming along.
And to be able to see the Suffolk in new ways and really appreciate what a beautiful, you know, historic piece of architecture that is from further away, it's just amazing. So, so many things were going on here in Riverhead. It's been a little bit like, we would say, herding cats. There are a lot of development proposals that are coming to the town. We had the question about how all the open space and the vision for the riverfront and connecting to it, the Town Square, would work. So in the spring, we pushed the pause button and said, you know, if our real objective here is to understand how Activation works, we're going to build this all around Activation, which is for everybody, the public realm. We really should start there, figure out the open space network. And then the architecture becomes like the stage set. But Activation is putting on the play. It's what really makes the place. So you've done the right thing in setting the blueprint for that and looking at that, and then we can consider all development in relation to that. Funding and financing is going to be important. We spent a lot of time talking about that over the summer. We've broken it down into bite-sized chunks, which are the phases. Different things can be paid for differently, but there definitely is a sequence you want to do things in. And money, unfortunately, doesn't grow on trees. We know that. You've been good at getting it, but it's going to be incremental. So we've done it in a way where you can take this down piece by piece. So the vision is to connect Main Street to the Peconic as we create an activated riverfront destination. And this has always been the vision, and this is what the Activation Plan looks at achieving. So the existing conditions... I'm sorry for the pauses, but on your clicker, the back button works really well. The front button, not so well.
We have a spare one in the office that you need.
It'd drive you nuts.
It's on my drawer.
So when we look at the existing conditions, what we see is opportunity everywhere, really, to be honest about it. And the most important step you'd already taken, which is to get the ball rolling through acquisition and demolition of those buildings where we now have the hydro-seated lot. You've done maybe what the most important thing is, but we need to keep the ball rolling. And we've broken the Activation Plan down into five phases. So the first phase is the Town Square, because that can go, as you can see today, without, it didn't disrupt, it didn't displace anything. So the Town Square can move ahead with funding separate from all these other things. But we know that the parking garage in the north parking lot is going to have to be built before we can begin taking out parking along the riverfront. And it also needs to go to allow additional economic development to happen in terms of some of the buildings which are proposed. We have number three there, the parking lot below the Town Square, we're calling the Adaptable Play and Plaza area. That's the third phase. East End Arts is the fourth phase, although it's somewhat independent. And then the riverfront and Heidi Bear Way, we call the fifth phase. And that's how we're going to walk through this. So again, it's broken into manageable pieces, and it can't all be done at once, but it can be achieved if you continue to go one step at a time. So we're going to talk about the Town Square. And the Activation elements that we're looking at for the Town Square include environmental art and science exhibits. And in each of these areas, there are things that are not ticketed, activities or experiences. You can do it for free, but they're supported by plenty of things. If you want to purchase a ticket, that you can pay for. But interactive environmental art and science exhibits are really the foundation of the recommendation for the Town Square, and they really relate to the Science Center and East End Arts and bringing arts and science together. And environmental art is, if you don't know, is really artist work that is intended to become part of the environment. So it might be something that reflects the regional heritage about your waterways or the history of Riverhead. It could be all kinds of different things. Those will be supplemented by movable tables and chairs, oversized games, outdoor dining, a small performance area, not the amphitheater, but just a place where a single performer could perform, kiosk, flexible event space, and enhanced Main Street crossing, which is very important. And then the holiday tree, of course, seasonally.
And that's already scheduled, with December 3rd at 4:30.
All right.
One of our nurseries, we've got to give a shout out to Jim Warner. He is providing us with an 18-foot, 18 and a half foot Canadian Bus Boost, and that's going to take place at the Riverfront. East End Arts involved, the chamber, our office, got a lot of donations, it's going to be beautiful there. So we'll see it, we'll be there at 4:30 on December 3rd, Saturday, December 3rd, so.
Perfect.
And it's going to be an opening. It's going to, the buildings are down, it's official, we opened up the Town Square, so it's going to be very significant that day.
Well, that's where it belongs, so you're putting it in the right place. So these are Activation elements that are common to Town Squares, but the oversized games, the, you can see some of the science exhibits, which we've spoken with the Science Center about, but they would be outside the Science Center, non-ticketed, so anyone could interact with them. A kiosk, we actually talked with Mr. Petracelli about the opportunity to do pop-ups in the square, too, which could be places that you could purchase ice cream, or they could be vendor stations. And then movable tables and chairs are a really good item for every day. You can see the environmental art piece up in the upper right-hand corner. And then the first perspective that we drew, I feel like we have the most comprehensive model of downtown Riverhead ever built at our office at this point. But the first perspective, this one, looks back at the Town Square from over that parking lot. You can see the Suffolk in the distance. And just for reference, you can see in the foreground, the kiosk, you can see the steps down and the water steps to the lower plaza. That's actually a flood mitigation element. You can see the movable tables and chairs, and then outdoor dining next to what will be crafted, which we're looking at moving to the Science Center building, and then also outdoor dining outside the hotel. And there would be retail along the entire face of the hotel. And oversized games are shown there, too. And then in the eye level perspective, which is on the next page, this puts you down in the Town Square every day. This is not supposed to be a special event, although it will accommodate special events, but this is every day. So the Town Square is raised about a foot and a half above Main Street for flood protection, sea level rise protection. Has a little ramp to drive up into it, so if you're having a market, like a farmer's market or something like that, you can get a vehicle up in there to set up and pull back out. But there's no obstruction in front of the Suffolk Theater. You get that clear view, and you can see some of those elements illustrated. And we just think, I mean, you can imagine the holiday tree in the middle of this picture during the holidays. I mean, it could just be amazing. And we've talked with the potential hotel developer about being the one to be responsible for the Town Square. And I think you've had those discussions, too, so you know a little bit about that. So we think as a, as a phase one, it could just be incredible, and it can stand on its own. It can be incredible with nothing else done around it right now, as you're seeing right now, it could be used. We just need that DRI money, please.
It's coming. Where is it?
Good God, where's the check?
Hopefully in a week or two.
So, the next part, I don't want to say it gets complicated, but it's important as we move into the parking garage. We talked about the need to do the parking garage. We've met with the National Development Council, who the town is engaged in nonprofit, to talk about potential financing for that. In speaking with them, they said that they need to true-up the number with Sam Schwartz in a parking study. They did the original Riverhead parking study. I know Councilman Kern has a number, he's shared with us before. So what we've done is we've illustrated Councilman Kern 580 spaces in this garage as a starting point. It's 580 is what we have shown. It's a pre-cast, prefabricated garage, and the cost of that is, in working with NDC, National Development Council, we can pull that off the shelf. We know what a pre-cast garage will cost. What they've told us is there's a couple of cost variables, so just simply what you're going to be hearing about. First is the soils and the foundation. That's a variable. They need to do some testing to see what the soils are. You're going to hear about that. The size of the garage and the number of spaces is going to affect the cost, because every space has a certain cost associated with it. And then the third variable is the skin. Whether we go with a simple screening would be low, or kind of a medium-cost skin, or we, you know us, we showed a nice skin here. But those are the three variables. So we're going to work on that so that they can get you a cost estimate of what that garage would cost. You can also see how it connects right back down to Main Street. You can see the improved crossing at the Suffolk, which is going to be critically important to improve that. I did test that yesterday. It's a little dicey, but we're proposing curb bump outs there, and it would be nice to have the flashing pedestrian actuated lights there. But the crossing is there today, just needs to be improved.
I think those things work really wonderfully, the blinking lights. I've seen them in other communities, and I've always been a proponent of that.
They have it in East Hampton, and so it was part of our DRI application to improve this crosswalk, and I told the DOT that we want what East Hampton has.
Yeah.
There you go. We did show an economic development opportunity here on East Avenue, which you can see the two-story building, which would be something that, that's a piece of property that could be sold and developed and also pay tax revenue back. And we have discussed the possibility of having a police substation in this garage as part of it. And we don't want to forget the importance throughout this area of police presence, cameras, and higher levels of lighting. It's been a discussion since the first time we met.
And signage.
And smiley signage.
Smiley signage.
Smiley signage. I think that's even in the pattern book, it says smiley signage.
Well, you put it in.
I think it is in the pattern book. Anyway, so we look forward to the continuing discussion on the garage, but we think that it's, you know, it would just be, it's going to, it's the key that unlocks a whole lot of additional things. In fact, all these other phases that we're about to talk about. But just so you know, that one shows 580. And it's four stories high, but five parking decks, because with a garage, you always gain an extra one, because you can park on the ceiling.
And I would just mention also that the location of the garage that's being shown is, will replace what was once First Street. First Street used to cut through Roanoke all the way to East Avenue, and there were homes there. The town purchased those homes, made it into parking, so we would really be sort of putting that historic street back in its place, so it's kind of interesting.
How do we get it running now? Like, what's our, what's the current, in the state it is now, the current number of parking spaces up there?
Sam Schwartz is going to, when they update their parking study, look at what would be displaced by the garage and then what would need to be added.
What's the actual game?
So they've counted all the spaces, which is why they have an advantage in doing the update. They already have the base study done.
And we have a draft of that, so shortly, we'll be discussing that.
And you'll see in a few minutes, we're actually recommending to you that you consider in the future a second garage or save a placeholder, so we don't put all our eggs in one basket and allow...
Look what happened in Patchon. I can undo it.
Right.
Yep. So the phase three, the adaptable play and the estuary, the water steps, would be the activities that everyone can participate in. These are things that have been asked for multiple times throughout the process. I think that the, the idea of, we call it the estuary here, we showed one kind of water feature. Some folks like the water feature, some would like a different kind of water feature. Some folks would prefer not to have a water feature. They say the Peconic's the water feature. But toddlers can't, you can't dip a toddler in the Peconic. Well, you could, but I don't think I dipped my toddler in the Peconic, just from a safety standpoint. But the, the way I kind of look at that is like Brussels sprouts. I'm not a big fan of Brussels sprouts, but a lot of people like Brussels sprouts. So we've included it. It could be a variety of different things. But the important thing there is it does not block the view. I would say, it needs to be something that can be animated, it can't block the view. We also have a cabana for food and beverage, possibly operated by the hotel operator. We talked to them about that, and they like that idea. Movable tables and chairs, an Instagram moment, a place you can get your photograph taken, flexible event space, green space, and seasonal skating in this area. So, well, I flipped to the next slide, which will take a second. You might want to talk about how seasonal skating was envisioned in the past.
So we, when I first started with community development, we had a grant through Suffolk County Downtown Revitalization for a skating rink, and there was no real good place to put it, and there was a lot of disagreement, so we wound up sort of giving that grant back. But I do think it's a perfect number for that type of funding. Those are the kinds of things we can plug and play in here. For instance, if we wanted to do the estuary or a different type of water feature, that could be a grant from Suffolk County DTR, or, you know, there's just a multitude of things we could use that funding, that type of funding for. And, you know, as Barry goes on, we'll see, you can see how, how it's all broken up. Makes it very easy for us to make an application, know what the cost will be, know what our match will be, you know, and, and understand what the impact of it will be, which is really what gets the grant funding.
They do the same thing in Bryant Park in Manhattan. And they break it down, and it comes springtime, and it's really a great feature for the whole community.
I think it would be optimal, right, in this location, right in the center. You'd come right down those, you know, stairs, and there it would be, right along the river. It'd be kind of an amazing view.
Barry, have you, I know in the past, we've talked, talked about, I had recommended boating from the riverfront. Is that in here at all?
Oh, yeah.
It is? It's coming?
It's coming.
I would love to see people just finish going to East End Arts and going to the parking lot and pulling up, pulling out their kayak and taking a ride.
Yep. It's coming. It's in the show. But the, oftentimes, we'll do a spray ground, but then we turn it off this time of year. We would set up like a synthetic skating rink, and then that's there with a holiday, it goes up when the holiday tree goes up. It comes down in February or March, and then you go back to a little water feature later. So those things work very well together. We have to have, like we showed here in the bottom left corner, or bottom right corner, an Instagram moment, so we have the giant letters that spell out Riverhead right down on the bottom of this area. And the idea of that is it's a place where there's only one Riverhead. It's interesting, there is only one Riverhead. Even on, when you go to Google Earth Pro and you type in Riverhead, a lot of times it gets confused, but not for Riverhead. I know, because I've looked at it a thousand times to take measurements here. So this is a view looking back up over what is the concept for what we're calling the estuary, which was the idea of kind of a shallow pond. And there's an example on the previous page in Philadelphia in a park that they had done. But it doesn't necessarily have to be that. This had a splash pad next to it. It could be a fountain, it could be a splash pad. We're not saying it should be one thing or the other. But one interesting idea that did come up through the process was doing something we're calling the water steps at the end of the plaza, where a kid could buy their rubber duck or their little boat at the Science Center gift shop and put it in the fountain and let it drift down into, you know, the splash area or the fountain or this little pond. And it becomes something to do for families.
Interactive.
Interactive for families. We also want to say for accessibility, we're very careful to build a ramp in from the flood-protected Town Square. It's off to the left-hand side, down to the next level down, and we have another one in the foreground by that Riverhead sign, which is a ramp to get down to Heidi Bear. We need these for accessibility reasons. And then this view looks over the adaptive play area. We think this could just be remarkable to do a themed adaptive play area. We hope that there's some money available for this. And then we showed the cabana, which would be a food and beverage use, where parents could go and actually sit and have a bite to eat or a drink and be able to see their kids, whether they're on either side. So one of the things the Activation consultant recommended is put a food and beverage use in proximity to this, so parents are invited to stay and their kids don't have to be on a leash. We did study, and this is something that Town Board asked us to look at, short and long versions of the hotel. So on this, this is the, you asked us to pull the hotel, look at the study, pull the hotel back and the Science Center back, and we've done that in this view, both of them. But the next view, we did want to illustrate, because we've had these discussions with both Mr. Petracelli and Long Island Science Center about other plans to, what if they extended out, if the hotel extended out almost all the way to Heidi Bear? And if we put the planetarium behind instead of on top of the building? So we've illustrated that, we've discussed it with them. We think, well, we, I'm just going to say, we've done this analysis for all of you to look at. And on the following pages, there's comparisons that are a smaller scale. And if you have a hard time seeing these, we have blown up versions in a separate document. But it looks at the scale of the Science Center from Main Street, from the river, and from the southwest, both as it is today, and then if it extended out, and then if we did the two-story version with a planetarium on top. And then we did the same thing with the hotel, looking at it from Main Street, from the southwest, and then from the southeast. And one of the things I would say about the hotel, the question is, did the hotel get smaller? It actually didn't get smaller. What got, what happened with the hotel is we took the museum piece off they had on the front, and we took the lobby off the back that was down on Heidi Bear, and we moved the lobby to Main Street. I'll show you that in just a minute. It actually works much better, we believe, from a, from a guest experience standpoint. So it just came in, it went on the ground floor. So we didn't actually affect the room levels of the hotel, we just took the noses off. And on the next page, you can see how hotel circulation would work. So the proposal here would be to have hotel drop-off in front of the hotel on Main Street and in front of East End Arts. Then the valet or guest would circulate around on East Avenue and right into the new parking garage. And then they could walk back across through the passage by the Suffolk and right across Main Street. Or the valet could take the car out, go back down to Roanoke, and circulate right back around and drop it. It's very clean. Having it down on the river created a more complicated pattern for the guest. And then down on the riverside, we have a restaurant in the back of the hotel, which everybody would be able to share. We've talked about maybe even doing it on the roof. And then servicing would work through the pedestrian plaza area, where we have that designed to accommodate pickup and delivery and trash and fire. But it's given over to pedestrians, it's not a street. It's just, it works like a European plaza where the service vehicles just drive through Okay, East End Arts. So phase four, because East End Arts, as you know, East End Arts has to be mitigated for flooding in the future, for sea level rise. Those buildings need to be lifted. We're also looking at adding the stage with the event lawn to East End Arts. The buildings are lifted and moved about a foot above Main Street. The house that's right up against Crafted is moved over a little bit, as long as we're lifting it, to give it some breathing room. The, the historic buildings are integrated around a little courtyard. Then we have a sculpture garden. And then we have this very large flexible event lawn that could be used for different things, although it has some seating terraces up at the top, and then it slopes down gently to the stage. It'll accommodate over 2,000 spectators scaled here. And it actually is expandable even beyond that, because it's visible from the plaza So on the next page, there's some precedents, like the outdoor stage in upstate New York at Lake Placid, which I think is a really nice comparable. You can see the little courtyard, the sculpture garden, and then the existing buildings today, which sit down below Main Street. So what we found is we can create a really intimate... So what we found is we can create a really intimate environment out of East End Arts. I've heard it described as a little bit of a hodgepodge, the way the buildings were located in there today, because that's actually not their original location, they were moved there. But we've done something here that's a little more intentional, and you can see how it would step down to the sculpture garden area, and then the large event lawn and the stage beyond. And the stage would be able to accommodate all kinds of different activities, from music to movies in the park, to theater performances. And then there's an eye-level view on the next page of that. The wonderful thing about this setting is, as you can see from this view, the Pecanic and the Maritime Park in the distance. I mean, this would be just a marquee location to be able to come to event, if you can imagine. And even if you go down there today and stand there and just imagine it, it's like the town square. You can visualize what this would be like today. It would be just incredible. So we do think this is the best location. We've had this thing in all different locations. This allows by far for the largest audience area, and we just think it could be remarkable. We love the idea of being able to see the river in the background. There's also good opportunities to stage on Heidi Bear Way for the other back-of-house stuff we need for that. And then finally, in the phasing, is the riverfront and Heidi Bear Way. Supervisor asked about boats. So in this area, the Pecanic River and the boardwalk are really the attractions. So we talked about those other attractions. Every area has an attraction, but down here, the attraction is the Pecanic. We also have added oversized swings, something we're calling the quay, which is something that sticks out into the river. A boathouse with rentals, food boats, picnic tables, the carousel we've stolen back.
I'll speak to him about it, to the mayor.
Shared space on Heidi Bear Way, and then the idea of a flat barge, which would actually run from the quay, you can see the little white dotted lines, across to the Maritime Park. I have an image behind it. This is the image we just were talking about there.
So that would eliminate the need for the bridge. That was always discussed, the bridge across, because Southampton's developing that entire area as a maritime park. It's going to be beautiful. They're going to have Vista Overlooks built into that side, so they'll be over. So rather than have that high bridge, we thought a flat barge would be very nice for accessibility purposes. Somebody even with a wheelchair could roll right onto it, they could take them across, and then they could experience that part, too. So a simple way, and maybe a summer job for some kids through recreation.
And then some of the elements we're looking at, I mean, you can see the Pecanic down there, it's just spectacular. When we're looking at the Maritime Park, you just never see that across, you know, tidal river like this. But we also are looking at doing swings along the boardwalk, and there's some examples there on the right. Food boats, which is like a boat version of a food truck, some seating with tables and chairs. And then on the next page, the quay down on the lower left, which is the idea of a little small pier that sticks out, just to be able to experience the Pecanic in a new way. And then the idea of a shared street out of Heidi Bear. It has to be raised eventually for protection from sea level rise. And the idea is just to border it with landscaping and get rid of the curbs, which is, you know, something that we're actually doing a lot now in these kind of areas. So it would remain a street, but you border it with landscaping, and you put in special paving just in the central riverfront area. And it would eliminate all the barriers from Main Street all the way to the Pecanic. It would take out the last barrier. But we're not recommending, I want to be clear, eliminating Heidi Bear. We're recommending keeping it. So this is the view that shows the boat rental area off to the right, folks paddling in the river, the swings along the riverfront, one of the food boats. And you're looking back up at the Suffolk.
Wow.
Yeah, that's what I said.
That's impressive.
Yeah.
Does anybody see that? If you don't have it up on the screen. But this is going online anyway.
Yes.
Yeah.
So where can they find it? Can you?
So wherever Chip will put it, I think we could put it on the homepage of.
Okay, we'll put it on our homepage.
We have the town square box. I think we could put it in the town square box, for sure.
Town square box?
Yep.
Homepage? Devin, you got that? Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is very impressive.
So this is not an inventive view. We have a model build of your town. Everything's to scale. And you can see the hotel on the left, pulled back. This is the pulled-back version. The Science Center with its planetarium. The importance of keeping the center open with the Suffolk. And you can imagine, you know, even if the estuary was a spray pad, it's still fantastic. And the big Riverhead sign there to the left. It, oh, it's just amazing what you could do. It's incredible. I don't know where we've ever had set pieces like the Suffolk Theater and the opportunity for the town square and then the Pecanic River. It's all here. It's just all lined with a lot of surface parking today, and it hasn't realized its potential.
You know, Barry, I always say that cars don't need to have riverfront views. People do. So we're actually turning that around, and we're having people have the view, and the cars are moved away.
I don't think the cars appreciate the river like.
No, I don't. I don't think so either.
Especially when it floods. Ow.
One of the things we've looked at with the bid, and Dawn and I talked about taking these images and putting them on like a sheet of plywood, printing them out, and putting them in the locations down there, so people, like there's no barrier to see what it, you know, the potential is. It's one of the things the town could do to help socialize these ideas.
And you know, that's very common to have some type of kiosk in the middle of where you're developing. And then you could just have, people can scan if they want, or they could just have a video. There's all kinds of integrative items out there that you could do. But that's a very common approach when you're building a new location. Because people are there, and they can envision it quite more appropriately.
Exactly.
You know, so I've seen it in two towns, and maybe that's something we could look at.
We think it would be fantastic. It would help people see the potential for the future.
And they can have remarks. They can type in remarks.
Yeah.
Right, so you get some data from it.
Yep. So on the events, we did think about how events would work, and they actually work out really well. We would have small events in the town square. Medium-sized events would be the town square plus the blue area, which would include the plaza area and the bottom part of East End Arts. Very large events, though, we can close off Heidi Bear Way in the central riverfront and actually use it to do the event, too. So we've had preliminary discussions with the bid. The bid, I would just say, if you look out, the bid needs to be amped up over all of this. They're going to need more resources to be able to do this, but the bid is the right organization. You have that in place today. And this also shows again how servicing would work for the hotel in East End Arts through the plaza, but it's a pedestrian plaza first. We also, with the Activation Consultant, looked at how to better connect on the east end to the aquarium. And you already have Turquoise down there today. Right next door, there's a restaurant that's proposed. That's one of the development proposals that's on the table. You own the house next to that, which would make a very nice additional restaurant. And then you have the Brew Pub on the back of Riverview Lofts. We've also shown the boathouse, which is part of the DRI application. And the opportunity to do a little bit of riverfront outdoor dining. So we think this area actually could be quite fascinating as a connection with a backdoor connection to the aquarium, where we've showed a little plaza. There's some precedent images on the next page. And then the perspective view looks at back towards the town square area. You can see Turquoise over on the right, and then the new restaurant that's proposed, that is the proposal for a two-story building there. You can see the boathouse as proposed in the DRI application. And then in the distance, you can see the swings. But we think this could be a really nice little restaurant cluster with outdoor dining that would just complement everything else that's proposed and make a stronger connection to the aquarium. So that's important. We didn't call that a phase, we just wanted to point that out. And then on the other end, we have the West Parking Lot. And this is where we're actually recommending you reserve a spot for a second garage. In studying this, we will look forward to what the parking consultant says. We've showed a 250-car garage in this location that preserves the existing circulation around the outside to serve the existing buildings, which we think is important from a fire standpoint. But also, we're just recommending long-term that you reserve a site for additional parking garage if you need it, because we're a little bit nervous about putting all of our eggs in one basket in the north garage.
What makes you nervous about that, Mr. Rais?
Well, we heard through the process that, a couple of things, that having everybody cross Main Street, it might not be a barrier for all of us, but it might be a barrier for some. We did hear that clearly. Some of the development down here, like this development that's shown, it gets to be a little bit distant. And again, I'm not a parking consultant, I want to be honest about that. So what we're recommending is that the parking consultant weigh in on this, because you've got 247 or 48 spaces that we're eliminating down here, which is significant. That's significant. So what this does, Councilmember Kern, is it just puts those spaces back. And you have an awful lot of development that's proposed. Not only, I'll show you this one, not only this one. Oh, thank, somebody brought another clicker. That one doesn't work either. So.
Devin, did you insult the, you have to insert the piece into the computer. It does work, but we have to insert the little piece.
It's okay, worthy.
Okay.
Thank you for that, though. So this shows how that would work. One of the interesting things here is it would create an address for the existing patio's behind by putting in a street, but also on the front, it would give you kind of the opportunity to do lovely new development facing out to the river. And you could also have commercial uses on that corner.
Barry, what exactly is that building? So I see the parking lot.
Yeah, so.
Is it retail stores or?
Yeah. So here's the, here's Heidi Bear, and this is that 250-car parking lot. So this is a line, or it comes out like that. This would be retail with outdoor dining. And here are the potential for outdoor dining. At some point, we'd re-structure that. And it would be lifted up on a little cliff to be flood-protected.
What's above it, office space?
Residential or office? Could be either. But definitely an economic development opportunity, since you own the property. So it also makes a very nice terminus to the square, which you can see in the final image here.
And those businesses that are located that back up to the parking lot there, it gives them proximate parking. The Vale Levitt is right there. The apartment building that's there has no parking at all. They depend entirely on the public parking there. And it provides a nice framework, because if you walk in the back of those buildings, now you can see that the business owners are trying to address the back and make the back entrances, but it's just super hodgepodge, because there's no, there's dumpsters and all kinds of nonsense back there that just makes it hard. And you can't see the river from the seating there. So creating this like intimate sort of way to get back there that looks lit, landscaped, safe, and provides the parking, we think will be important to those businesses, because the on-street parking on that side is weak, too, for those, because we have the jog with Roanoke Avenue, so it's tough to sort of get there. And so this was something that was discussed as a part of it.
As a future phase.
With replacing it with the same amount of parking, can we go a little higher? I mean, I think we're going to certainly need more parking, as obviously, especially if you're adding restaurants in there and just the people attending the town square, whether it be office, people working during the day, like, I still see a need that, we need a lot more parking.
Would agree, Councilmember Roff. Well, that was one of the issues of reserving a space, saying, you know, if we need it, we might not want to just give that away, since you own it already. It's, we're likely to need some. And our parking consultant, again, with it, by adding the spaces up in the north, it takes some pressure off, but we feel like there's still going to be some pressure here. Because in this final view, you can see we have a legacy building which is proposed. That doesn't have any parking in that building, so that's, that needs to be accommodated here. But it's going to be accommodated down here in the interim. We have the hotel, which will park in the new north parking garage. This building has a low parking ratio. It does have parking. This one has, uses some of the existing parking. And there's a bunch of other developments which aren't even, you know, accounted for yet. And that's, it's just all this potential development together. We really need to seriously balance parking. This has to be balanced. You have a big number.
Well, I, well, my number is based on, it's not, it just pulled out of the sky. It's based on reality.
Yeah.
The traffic from the Science Museum, what parking is available, what's not, the expansion of the theater. Okay, so, and I'm happy not to, you know, I'll share it with you. I'd like to have a meeting with you on that. But it's significantly higher than.
What's your number, Bob?
It's closer to, it's over 800.
And what do you think this garage is specifying is?
This would be two, so 580 and 250.
580 and 250, we have together.
You also have me and my parking at the new town hall. It's another 300, 300 spots.
Yeah, you do have that, too.
So if I'm sensitive to the hotel, right?
250 or whatever it is.
And I'm sensitive to the market rate, because they need to be guaranteed. And then I look, I didn't, what I didn't include, I, just now, but I included in my calculations, is 2,000 people. 2,000 people coming to park, because that's revenue for the garage. So I don't, I'm not.
You're talking about for events?
Absolutely.
For events.
Yeah, so, but we can discuss that.
Yeah, and you've hired a parking specialist, or you have a parking specialist, too, that are experts at that.
Yeah.
So what we were asked to do is look at the options, and so that's what we've included for you, but.
Leaving this piece lets you phase it, you know?
Yeah, it lets you phase it, too.
It's costly. The garages are costly, and until we get some momentum, and, you know, you may not need it all, but at some point, you probably will need it all, and then some. So that leaves you that.
We'd actually keep this east lot for a while. It's important right now. And that's why we included it as kind of last, a future, because it has, most of the 250 are in that lot right now. The 250 on the riverfront are in that lot. That would be the last thing we would do. That would be our recommendation.
So that would still be there for parking.
Because you're going to disrupt your north parking lot when you build the garage. This parking is going to get a lot more use. And that's why we say phasing is really important. Town square, one, north garage, two. Then probably the plaza area can go down here, but you need to think about how it all gets phased together.
Is the apartment complex next, that's going to be constructed next to the Pecanic Brewery?
Yes.
The vacant lot, is that going to have parking in it?
It has parking in it, yes.
And that will cover its own residence as part of the project?
I do think.
Not completely, but.
Yes, I do think we will need some spaces, and I think the north parking garage is a good opportunity for those residents to get parking and to offset the cost to the town. You know, I don't know if we'll know what it will cost ultimately and how much revenue, but it's clearly something, you know, that needs to be done.
I apologize. I have to leave for another appointment, but I did want to say that these are really striking images, and they're really great to look at, what can possibly happen. I do have one comment, though. I would favor, especially with the Science Center, the planetarium on top of the building instead of encroaching out into the river.
Absolutely.
That was just my own opinion, but I think it's really wonderful, especially tying the east side to the aquarium, which is of course one of, if not our biggest draw in the town.
It is our number one attract.
So I think, you know, really great job. Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
And I appreciate all the work you've done, and of course, Dawn as well.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, you have wonderful staff. So that's my presentation. I just conclude by saying, the Activation Plan, it's a blueprint. It's designed to be implemented in phases, and as you have seen, it will be transformation.
I have to say, I'm really happy that East End Arts is going to come up, because this rate of programming has been since Diane took over, it's gone to all new levels. And I'm really, kudos to you for that, even with the signage.
She's put a tremendous amount of work into it.
And I would hope that, you know, I know they're historic buildings, but that we can do something painting-wise.
Oh, I think Joe was going to have some type of plan on that, to possibly elevate them. But that's the next phrase, I think, but that's, you're right, they should.
But you like to paint them in like a little bit of a more popping color.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so you get the sense of art, you know, when you see the sign.
But it's got to have a history.
Understood, but I think just with painting it properly, you can accomplish both.
It could be really remarkable. I agree with you on that.
It's really changed a lot. Become a real deal now.
So first I'll say this is absolutely overly impressive. So it's it's great work and it's exciting. I just, in terms of just blending in, so I see Mr. Petroselli here, but like looking as we approach the aquarium, so going past like turquoise grill. How can, is there any thought accomplished development? I know like right now when we enter the aquarium, we come right off of Main Street. But is there a way to incorporate that the flow of pedestrian traffic will come along Heidi Bear Way, visit these, and then could they, you know, I'm putting Mr. Petroselli on the spot to, you know, at one point enter the aquarium, you know, from the west side of the building or something to just kind of blend that so that our landscape flows right into it as opposed to being kind of like blocked and going back up to the main and in. Do you know what I mean? To develop that, that just, I think that's the last like key piece is like right between us and the aquarium.
Just to make the connection. Oh, that's from the water.
And even if it's just a gathering area that works its way around to the front or something that somehow to blend it all. And it's not like we, like when we reach your facility, we hit a wall, you know? And then we gotta, we gotta go up.
I think your AV person is saying they can't hear Mr. Petroselli.
Okay, they can't he- hear you.
Oh, yeah, right. That he needed to come up to the mic.
I don't mean, I don't mean to put him on the spot. It's okay. Just, I'm just thinking like to just to blend it that way. And then I think then we've got, we've got all of Main Street covered right from the way through. From one side to the other. One complete loop right, right? It gets pedestrian pass. One to the next to the next. You know, we want to, we want to think about the turquoise grill and the Peconic Brewery. Making sure that that traffic, you know, pedestrian traffic is flowing and and that they're utilizing those retail places as well.
Yeah, our activation consultant filled my.
Feedback, Larry. We're getting feedback on Ken and on Barry.
Met with Mr. Petroselli and his team. And one of the things our activation consultant recommended is looking at that connection there. So there's a follow up. And I would say with, in fairness to the Science Center and the hotel team, and we've met with them during the process as recently as this week. But the architects, and we've met with our architects separately. We still have more coordination to do because they're experts, need to look at the proposals and true them up. But I think that we've had really productive dialogues with all of them. I agree with you about that experience. If you could make the experience along the riverfront, it kind of dies down there right now. You don't really get a strong termination.
Just exactly to come up from turquoise grill like back up to Main Street. If it's, it's more if we develop the sidewalk patterns there or other just sitting areas that kind of work their way, maybe we flow lift the pedestrian traffic right up to Main Street to the front. But just to kind of, that's one spot that's just a little unfinished.
It's a great comment because you lose it on Main Street at the gas station. That's a spark gap when you're walking down Main Street. As a family, the gas station doesn't feel great.
Buy the gas station, that really is.
Good luck with that.
Working on that.
I mean, just again, I'm overly impressed. It's exciting and and we're anxious to move forward. So when are we breaking ground?
So it's, you know, show me the money, right? So then, but we have DRI announcements that have not been made yet. We expect them.
Within the two weeks.
But momentarily, right? Those, we have some interest from private individuals who are considering funding some of these pieces of it.
Philanthropic, some of the not development pieces.
Philanthropic donations.
Open space, yeah.
Potential donors, donors. The garage will be up to you. That'll be up to you. But I think we'll have enough money to build the square with the DRI funding and then some, probably. And so, and then you have, as Barry pointed out, there's some other pieces you could trade for different things to get things done that you want to get done. So it's, it's going to be a grind, but we'll keep grinding. We keep applying, we keep looking. And this gives us a beautiful blueprint for those applications and that vision and that the vision was created with the community. It's absolutely super helpful for all of that. So we'll be using this forever.
How are we doing like on finding a place for Craft and like when we can expect the third building to come down? Because I imagine that's gonna.
So I think the Craft that is working with Mr. Petroselli and the Science Center, it's expected to move to the nose of the Science Center to wrap around there. So they'll have an expanded opportunity. They actually have the sanitary that they need to have a real kitchen. They don't have that where they are now. And then as soon as we, as soon as we get the funding and we work out the master developer, the purchase and sale agreement with the master developer, we're ready to go.
So two months, we can get all this stuff.
You know, I mean, I don't think it would be, I literally don't think it would be crazy to see construction within 18 months to 24 months.
How long?
I don't think that's, I'm being very, you know.
I know, conservative, I get it.
Yeah, I, you know, I know how government and things, how they move. So but at the other hand, you know, this board's just been hammering this since day one.
It's a different government now.
But that's it. But that's, the unity of this board, the the vision, the willingness has been what's drawn these investments. You have not only developer investment, you have philanthropic investment potential. You have the public interested. So it's all, that's really what made it happen. That's the soul.
I mean, we have the land, we have everything, right? So once we get the DRI money, we have the agreement with the master developer. There's nothing holding us back from starting this, nothing.
There's earnings in place. There's, you know, secret that will need to be done, but it's all.
And a lot of research was was put together.
We have market research.
Practices and sorted and you enhanced and you took an angle and you went with it. And this is very impressive in such short period of time to see this. Because this is no longer, let's talk, we think, maybe there was a survey and and a lot of the pieces are in play, including the master developers for both the TOD and the town square. It looks beautiful. I'm sure this, I know this is not the final version. There'll be some tweaks.
There'll be a report that comes with it, yeah.
You definitely.
More discussions.
Yeah, the board and people's opinions. But you're definitely on your way and I want to congratulate you because this is an exciting time in Riverhead.
Me too. I think it was, it's really kind of fascinating because when we first started talking about this, I'm like, well, we could put a town square, we can have a town square, someday we'll have a town square. We have a town square. You have done that.
That's it.
That was the biggest single piece here. And now we just make it what you want it to be and what the town needs it to be.
Great.
This is absolutely amazing. And I highly recommend to the town, to the people, if you watched the presentation, you got it. Go online, this will be online. Go through it page by page. This is an incredible presentation. This, along with the TOD and everything, and I've said this so many times, the big picture, the big picture. This is bringing it all in closer. And when this is done, there will, everybody's property in the town of Riverhead will be more valuable. We will, we will be what everybody else on Eastern Long Island wants. But we're going to have it. So I, I am so excited. We have the right players in place. We have the developers who we know the work they do. They've showed us time and time again. I am so excited for this. I just, I can't wait.
I think this board, you know, we say, like we say in my office, right? Change is going to happen.
Change is going to happen. It's it's not 1964 people. It's it's not, and I get that.
Yep.
You know, but but it's in 2022 for a town that was on the cusp of going down.
Yeah.
To bring it back like this, to revitalize the downtown square, the Railroad Avenue development and many other things that are coming down the pike for this town. I'm like a little kid at Christmas.
Me too.
I think it's great.
I think you're making change happen for you instead of letting it happen to you.
Thank you all for your work. The CDA, you guys are tremendous. We have the best CDA around and our developers, our bid. You guys, just the work that's been done in this town to bring this town up from where it was 15, 20 years ago is incredible. And and even nicer is what's yet to come. So that's where we're at.
I think you're going to see a lot of economic development follow this. And that's what the market study said too. When you create a family friendly destination, which is builds on the success of the aquarium, but really, you know, celebrated throughout downtown. If you can appeal to kids and seniors, you get everybody in between. And that's going to drive other economic development in the existing storefronts.
Well, the aquarium was originally developed as the anchor for the revitalization of downtown Riverhead.
And it did a job.
It's taken longer than it's, than it should have, but it's exactly what we wanted. It's exactly what made it happen. And and that was, that was the breaking ground part of the revitalization of downtown. And I just can't wait this in 10 years, just to walk downtown and be completely proud of everything this town has.
Me too.
Four years.
And when when Joe Petroselli came here, he believed in us. Nobody else did. It was a big chance that he took. And it was courageous to take a, an area that's so blighted for many years and to say, I have a vision and now you are part of the vision. And again, it's no longer talking and plans, we're moving forward. We ought to give a shout out to NDC. They've been our consultants. They're excellent. And that's why Dawn, you brought them in. They were so necessary because they've worked with us with the hospital. And they're a not-for-profit. They work with other municipalities to help us address the finances and and do research for us. And their work is also invaluable because they think we've been able to move, having them as consultants.
It's a complete team effort here.
It is a team effort. So thank you, Barry.
Hey, it's our pleasure. We love working for you guys.
How's East End Arts like the amphitheater vibe?
Yes. So thank you. This is going to conclude our work session. Get up first and a second to, get up first and a second to close this meeting, please.
No, I want to keep talking about this. It's exciting. I don't want to end.
Before you close.
Come into my office and we can laugh all day.
Madam supervisor, before we close it, I just, I know it's quarter to 12, but at 1 o'clock today, the ribbon cutting for the walking trail downtown Riverhead.
Is it at 1?
Yes.
It's at 1 o'clock.
What about?
Just anybody watching live today, if you get a chance to come down, they're going to tour some of the stops of the walking trail. And it's a really cool thing. Richard Wines and and many others put this together. So if you get a chance, please stop down. It is already activated, so stop down, use it. I think you'll be pretty impressed with with the different stops that are there. So I just wanted to mention that's at 1 o'clock today.
At the location is the.